Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Hudson for Monday, August 19th, 2013. If you please, I'll call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Morissette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Teewinkle.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt is excused. District Six, Vanslow.
Here.
Okay, at this point, we'd like anybody that's in the viewing, that's here tonight, that would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, now is your time. So is there anyone here that would like to address the council on any issue? Now is your time. Okay, seeing none, we have special introductions tonight. I don't know who's gonna be doing that, but we're really proud and happy to have the 2013 Ms. Hudson Court here tonight. Kelsey's gonna do the introductions.
(laughing).
So if you want to, Kelsey, if you want to step to the microphone.
That's what happens when I know your name, so.
So if you want to introduce the court and have them come up, and then they can be on TV, and we really appreciate all the work that you folks do for us and representing the city of Hudson.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you. So, you're on.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for having us.
Yes.
And this is the 2013 Ms. Hudson Court. We have Princess Emily Holman, Princess Chelsea Bates, Queen Bethany Klondorman, and Princess Josie Gall.
So, okay, thank you. (applause). So, do you have anything you'd like to tell us?
We just want to thank you for supporting our program and donating money every year and keeping us going. The scholarships help these girls so much, I know because I was a former queen, and the scholarship helped me so much, like through schooling, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First order of business is the minutes of the past meeting for August 5th. Any changes, comments, or thoughts? Oh, that's a consent agenda, sorry. I'll let you go to the consent agenda.
To approve the public hearing minutes and the regular meeting minutes of August 5th, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $303,508.15. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period August 20th, 2013, to June 30th, 2015, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that is owed to the city. And to approve the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used September 20th through 22nd, 2013, at the St. Patrick's Parish Fall Festival. Additional operator license information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the annual Hot Air Affair event to be held February 7th through 9th, 2014, as presented. To approve the issuance of a temporary beer and wine license to St. Patrick's Parish for the Fall Fest event on September 20th through 23rd, 2013, at 1500 Vine Street. To place and file the quarterly reports of the Water Utility Director and the Police Chief, and the monthly report of the Finance Officer, and the August 13th, 2013 minutes of the Public Utility Commission. And that is all.
Roll call.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Oh, wait, we didn't get a motion.
We need a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Now we'll do a roll call vote, sorry.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette? Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Consider Red Cedar Canyon Final Platte, 27 One Family Lots, Hans Hagen's Home, John Roche. Denny?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Red Cedar Canyon Final, Red Cedar Canyon Final Platte is Platte's 27 One Family Lots. These will be the last 27 lots in Red Cedar Canyon planned residential development to be platted. We currently are working on a development agreement. In this particular case, the development agreement is pretty simple because we've done some of these, we're plating outlots, and it's just a matter of getting the square footage area assigned for the impact fees, so that's being addressed now in draft, and we'll be sending draft of that to Kathy shortly. Plan Commission recommends approval. Again, these will be the final 27 lots in Red Cedar Canyon. With that said, I'm working with Hans Hagen Homes to possibly replat five lots. We don't know yet if it will be replatted or we'll change the five to four, but, so I say final, but then again, we may come back in a few weeks with the replat on one area of Red Cedar. Again, those are one-family residential lots, so recommend approval.
Questions?
I move for approval of the final plat of Red Cedar Canyon, contingent upon the execution of development agreement, and...
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Denny? You have that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six from Finance, it was Consider Proposals for Aluminum Dock for Lakefront Park Boat Launch Issue Sheet. I think you have it in front of you. The bids that came in, I think you had four or five bids, and the low bid came in at $19,006.05. The, with the fact that if we get the insurance, the funding will come from insurance settlements. If we get that, that would be where the fund would come for. If we do not receive funds for that, then we'll bring it back and see if we can find funds for this. Questions?
So, I have a question.
Yep.
So John had brought up at a previous meeting that he wanted Public Works to look at lifting.
The what?
He wanted Public Works to look at possibly lifting the boat launch or raising it up higher.
Okay.
Due to flooding. So if, if that's something that Public Works eventually looks at, is it gonna, is this gonna be affected by that? I mean, are we gonna repair something and then redo it again, or?
This is just the dock?
Just the dock itself.
Sliding dock, you know, those two portable docks.
He was asking for more sand and more stuff underneath.
I think he wanted to physically lift it up, like, I don't know, because it was supposed to go to Public Works, but I think he wanted to physically lift it up.
Well, I mean, this being a portable dock, it's gonna get used.
Doesn't matter. Okay. I just want to make sure.
I don't even know, Lori, has that even come on the agenda? Okay. Any other questions?
Move for approval for, to recommend we accept the bid, Bernard. Brainerd Lake Stock, then lift LLC, option three and four, in the amount of $19,605. Contingent upon receipt of the insurance funds from the city's property insurance carrier.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six B is a, consider specifications of equipment for the Minnesota MinDOT equipment contracts for the purchase of a pothole patch recycler. And Tom is here, you see the information in front. We, in Finance, recommend we, we delay because we have to, we have a trade-in value, and we need to bid that out. I mean, include it in the price, so we're gonna ask for a delay until September 16th?
Yeah, the second meeting, it'll go off through the bid process.
We have to rebid it because we didn't include the trade-in of our present. So is there a motion to, unless anybody has any questions on that?
And we didn't bid it.
Correct.
No.
The prices you see here are the Minnesota State bid, and because there's a trade-in involved. Correct.
Well, point of order, I believe it was recommended, it was already tabled through the committee, I don't think it would be tabled here.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't have to be...
Correct. Thank you, thank you, Randy.
Have to be decided on by the council.
Okay, just for your information, for informational purposes, then. Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Consider bids received for emergency generators is the next item on the agenda. As you can see, there was, Tom, do you want to come up and answer any questions? But there was a bid, the low bid is B&amp;B Electric. Total price is $57,580. $60,000 were allocated from our capital funds. This will install it permanently. Why don't you explain where you're gonna put it, or where we're gonna put it?
Sure. The generator is proposed to be installed at the north side of the building, in between the two service doors on the north side of the building. Be a cement pad, and the generator, generator will be a gas, operate on natural gas. B&amp;B Electric, again, was a low bid, and the alternates, alternatives, alternates, excuse me, were for insulated shroud on the outside, aluminum shroud to keep the noise down. It is pretty close to the building, and some other warranty options on that.
Will we approve then, approve the bid from B&amp;B Electric for total $57,580?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions for Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six D is the Issue Sheet on Street Maintenance Received for Street Projects. As you can see, we have, Tom, why don't you go through it? You got your computer up?
Yep.
All right.
Yep. This year, we're planning to do maintenance on Jordi Circle, Ruby Road, White Pine Road, Hunter Hill Road from Wisconsin, the Grand View, and that'll be route and crack sealing. Flex patching will be done on St. Croix Street from First to 11th, and along the Dyke Road is gonna be a two-step process where we're gonna fill the large gap with a more of a mastique, and then go over it with a flex patch to get rid of that, some of the trepazards and the big gaps and things in the concrete on the Dyke Road. Also, alternate C will be a route and crack seal and flex patch from, on Vine Street from Wisconsin to Carmichael. Seventh Street, from the Seventh Street Bridge, all the way up to Summer Street. Stageline Road will be from Coach Light to the I-34, the, not, the Highway 35 Bridge. The crack sealing will be done this, this fall yet, probably starting in September. The other portion of the street maintenance will be held off until next spring, and then that'll be, I think we have St. Croix Street, Vine Street, Seventh Street, on, on the streets to get seal, seal coated for next year. And Hunter Hill Road also.
Okay. Questions?
Now, I know that it's, you know, because of capital funding that we were delayed and Would it make sense to only do, or fund A this year? Because I have a feeling, I mean, here we are with one bid again.
Yep.
And I think it's because they're all booked out for the year, and they would assume that A, B, and C needed to get done, because it doesn't sound like it was communicated until after Farner was the only bidder. You know, I, I have a feeling that if it went out earlier next year, we would get more bids.
Certainly can do that. One of the things that I think the company that used to do a lot of the bidding against Farner was purchased by Farner. This year or last year?
Couple of years ago, yes.
Yep.
So they had monopoly on the crack sealing of Farner?
Was this set up in the bid as three separate options? Three, three alternative bids, or was it one bid for all of it?
It was one bid for all. It just kind of broke up into this.
I'm trying to bring that up, whether or not we can break that out in three.
We may not be able to.
I don't think we can, right?
So it's probably all or nothing, because if it was three options, and there was bid that way.
Okay, so let's say Kurt's idea is it makes sense, and how, and we just do the entire process in early spring? Like everything?
Well, you'd have to reject all bids and rebid.
We have to rebid then, because it's over 90 days or what have you?
The problem is, we wouldn't get our seal cracking done now, which we have time to do right now.
Right, but...
Yep.
How much, how much damage will due to the roads if we just wait, since we're so far behind anyways now? If we just wait and do everything in the spring?
Price could go up also.
Could.
We've got, we've got...
Or like Kurt said, we could have competitive bidding, and, I mean, we're rolling the dice.
I mean, it's just the second, it's the second project I've seen come through in a month, that we have one bidder. And, I mean, I was watching the Finance Committee, and I know that there's not a lot of companies doing it, but there's more than Farner.
Are there, do we, are there general options out there for us besides Farner?
Like we talked about in Finance, some of the companies that are from, that do the work in Minnesota, seems like there's a, do not like to cross the St. Croix River for some reason, and then we've contacted other big companies down in southern Wisconsin, and it seems like they don't come any farther than, say, Eau Claire. So we have tried to contact some of the other companies, and I think when we put it out for bid, Karen, did you put it on the contractor website?
Yeah, we put it out, we put it out for bid, and we had another company pick up the plan and specs, but they didn't bid on the project. And I think, listening, I think there was some confusion, because this year, this fall, they will do A, B, and C. As part of the street maintenance project that we looked at previously, we had seal coating on there, the chip sealing where they put down the rock and the oil, and come sweep that off. And we talked to Farners, and we asked them, would it be better to put it on this bid, but have it done in 2014? Or would it be better to bid it in 2014? And they recommended that we bid it in 2014, because you get a better, they know what the oil price is gonna be. And right now, they would have to speculate on what it, what it would be. So otherwise, we were gonna put it on the street maintenance and have it done in 2014, because once you go after September, you have to use a different oil, and the price goes up.
My only concern would be with, this is a type of maintenance that we do, and I personally think that, you know, crack sealing is so very important, if we, we're gonna lose another whole winter with water and stuff going down into our streets.
Sure.
I understand that we only have one bidder, but, you know, then we're also jeopardizing, I think, our quality of our streets also. We're gonna just lose another six months of water going down into the cracks and things like that. Probably, you know, make for more potholes and patching next spring also, so just something to consider.
And actually, talking with Tom, and that, we do think this might be better, we do the crack sealing in the fall, and then in the spring, early summer, we do the seal coating. So it's part of the 2013 street maintenance, but the seal coating's done in 2014, and then in fall 2014, we have the next crack sealing and sealing project.
I think it would be a good way to do it, is to do the seal, you know, the crack sealing in the fall, and then next spring do the seal coating, and then you have all summer to let the gravel pack down and really set in there, so might be a good way to do it, actually.
I understand, Kurt, your concern, but I want to stay on course, and I want to move it. It's our, it's our fault that it's taken so long. You know, and I don't, I don't agree with it, but I think we just need to move forward and stay on course and get these things done.
Right. And I agree, because like Tom said, I don't think we can jeopardize five streets not getting, you know, crack sealed. That's, we have, you know, we have enough things to, roads to deal with.
Yep.
You know, and I, I, I see it getting much better as far as timing. You know, I, I'm just concerned about one bid again. I'm actually more concerned about that than the, than the waiting for the seal coating, but... And as I, sorry, as I mentioned in Finance, two, 2014 funding is there now. Right. So January, we can get started on, not this, this street maintenance and street reconstruction and whatever else, and we hit it right away in the spring and get the bids in. And whether they do it in the spring or the fall, but at least get the bids in, and...
I'd prefer we get them done quicker, and not wait till the end.
Let me see on the street reconstruction project, if we know now, because if we're gonna do a total reconstruction, we need survey information, which would be good to do in the fall.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to award the contract to Farmer Asphalt in the amount of $109,049.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tom, as long as you're here, the Consider Recommendation to Fill Public Works Maintenance Position. We have Mark Lotney is retiring after 29 years of service of the city of Hudson, and we just want to get working on that position as soon as possible, correct?
Yep. It's a position that generally handles the streetlights, signal lights, signs, street inventory, and street ratings, and things like that. Currently, we have had one of the Public Works Maintenance Workers working alongside of them whenever possible to learn some of the signals and streetlights and things like We're hoping that we can do a lateral move with someone within the Public Works Department for that position, and get approval to hire a street maintenance worker this fall yet. I think Mark's last working days are gonna be like in mid-December, with the snow season upon us. Anytime after November, it'd be nice to have that position filled, hopefully by mid-November, if possible.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Or if there...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this, so when you're looking at, Mark also did snowplowing and stuff too, right? So, do you have to have a Class A license for that, or what do you?
Anytime we hire anyone in the street department, it's required that we have a Class B Commercial Driver's License?
And that'll be noted, and we get a lot of applications that don't have it, we just simply don't look at it.
Okay.
It's usually noted in the newspaper that if you do not currently possess the CDL, you will not be considered, and...
Okay, because I shouldn't want to lose another snowplow.
No.
Personnel, so...
I'll make a motion to move ahead with the process for a maintenance worker in the Public Works and Park Department, with an anticipated start date in mid-November.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a parking lot, parking attendant position open. Recommendation from Chief Jensen was to authorize a replacement for Lori. Any discussion on that?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is our deer management contract from River Valley Deer Management Company, 2013, 2014. We had a pretty good discussion, I think, in Public Works, or in Finance. The healthy population is 20 to 30 deer per square mile, and we have 80. So we're still in the situation, we're gonna be requesting, we get information on how many they took two years ago, and how many they took last year.
Yeah, they didn't take very many last year.
No, it was, I think Marty recommended under, or said there was under 40.
Yes.
I thought 40 was the number, 38 or something like that. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Was there a reason why, I mean, besides environment, that they took, we didn't change anything on them, that they took less last year? It was just environment?
I don't know if it was the, the weather, or the amount of hours.
Right, environment.
Yep.
I didn't know if we changed the distance or anything for the, I couldn't remember.
No, we didn't. I don't believe we changed anything.
They hit better.
They're smarter.
It was warmer. I'll move to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, or any discussion on it?
When I get the information from Ma, I'll email it to everybody.
They're all hiding in my yard.
They're all over at Randy's house. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Okay, Public Safety Review Data, Speed Data, and Consider Safety Options on St. Croix Street and 11th Street. Mary, is this yours, or Marty?
Yeah, well, either one, do you want to talk, or you want me to talk first? Well, sure.
Nobody wants to talk about it, huh?
Well, here's the deal, public safety was very conflicted as to what to do. I, I, I could've said, shot it down there, or I could've, I was basically the other yes vote. John wanted it, and, you know, Rich said no, but I wanted council to discuss it, so that's why we put it through, because the data shows minimal accidents, we understand that, but the data also shows excessive speed. So, it's kind of a difficult situation. Obviously, yes, we can have men on there giving tickets and doing what they need to do, but, you know, that's not the only spot in Hudson either, but that, that's a high, highly, 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 there's high traffic in that area, especially when school starts. So we took this data when there's out, without school in place, and it's just gonna get, probably get worse, but I think Marty can talk more about it. We did think of, if we did do the speed, the electronic speedometer, or whatever, electronic speed sign, that we could possibly move the one that was on Vine Street facing east, since it's right off the stop sign, and leave the one going into town, obviously, if that were less expensive, or if it were less expensive to just get a new one for that area, we would, we would look at that, but there was options out there that we just were discussing and tossing around, so we thought we better bring it to council just to get more opinions.
The, the data shows that there were two accidents at that intersection in the past, what was it, six, seven years, Marty?
I think it was five.
There were more, there's probably about eight with the last, since 1999.
Yeah, which isn't very many, that's...
So over, over a period of 13 years, we've had, you know, six or seven accidents. Several of those were single car accidents, some of those alcohol...
Late at night.
Late at night, some of those alcohol-related. So the accident rate, the data...
Right.
Doesn't show that the intersection, you know, is a hazard or a problem. And, and, and I think my problem with this is that we're, we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist, and we're gonna spend money to do something that doesn't need it to be exist. I would, I would hope that all of the intersections in Hudson had as low an accident rate as this one does. So I don't think we have a problem, and I don't think we should be spending money to fix something that's not a problem.
Well, looking at the data, I'd say there's a speeding problem, because over, what?
Right.
The average is 27 miles an hour.
A little higher than that.
No, the average speed is, and it's posted at 25, but you got almost 6.5 percent people going over 40.
Which can be handled, which can be handled by enforcement.
Right, but we...
You're still spending money there.
Yeah, we had, that's, that's what a conflict happened, because how much...
At a much lower rate, Randy, you know, we're gonna spend maybe a thousand dollars in overtime.
Enforcement versus the, a $5,000 sign, when we can then have enforcement elsewhere, which we also need in the city, and Marty's had little numbers with enforcement recently due to various situations in his department, so I don't, I'm just, that's why we brought it, because of the exact conversation you guys just had, is, there was that debate going on. So I don't know, Marty, if you have any more to add, or if I blew it.
Jump in, Marty, with both feet.
Well, as, as the speed data will show, and I think Lori and I went to, obviously, that traffic data course back, oh, that's gotta be seven, eight years now. If you look at the data, especially on the first page, it says the 85 percentile. Basically, what is, that's what people believe, that you can safely drive on that roadway, and that is coming up the hill on Bear Drive, and you'll see that's at 37 miles an hour. So they're coming up at that intersection at 37 miles an hour. That's how they feel that they can drive that road safely. Obviously, coming to that intersection a little too fast. So that's what the data shows. I was able, asked to put some numbers together in regards to maybe moving one of the speed signs or getting a new one. Currently, it'll cost a ride around $3,300 to buy a brand-new sign that looks identical to the one that we have out on Vine Street. If we ran the power by itself, right off of one of the posts down there, Tom gave me an estimate of about $700, just to put in the concrete and put the pole in, and then XL Energy's about another $500 to run power to it, roughly, that'd be just kind of an estimate, and then they're gonna want to put a meter on it, so that they can charge back the, the city for the use on a monthly basis. I also got a quote for putting it in as a...
Solar?
Solar. We can get an adapted kit for it, that'll be about $2,000. So brand-new, you're looking somewhere right around $5,500. If we were to move one of those from Vine Street down there, you're looking at about, and then running the power off of it, you're looking at around twelve hundred dollars.
I would not be in favor of taking them off of Vine Street.
Off the stop sign? The one that, when you turn off the stop sign?
What, what it serves as is a reminder that it's twenty-five. I, I mean, I'm just looking at these numbers for that corner. I mean, that stretch of Vine Street, I don't know if Marty has statistics on it, but I would, just living very close to it, I would imagine the eighty-fifth percentile is higher than thirty-seven, the average speed is higher than twenty-seven, so I don't wanna take them off of-
That's fine, it was just an option we were looking at for, 'cause of funding. I mean, your logic is serving the same purpose as, as Bear Road, is that apparently people need to be reminded to not go through that intersection at thirty-seven miles per hour. I mean, if you went up the hill at thirty-seven miles per hour, I don't know how fast you're slowing down, and if it's, you know, I know the accident data doesn't show it, but I don't know, I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't on the council when we put the signs up in Vine Street, so I don't know what the accident data was back then to determine it.
Do we have traffic numbers of that intersection? We must, and then the one at the Y. I have to believe they're pretty different.
There was a study on that whole corridor, right after that accident had occurred with the pedestrian.
But I'm just saying, if you look at the volume at those two intersections, it has to be-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the volume is not even-
The similarity is, they're both somewhat rural, thirty-five going into the city, I get that.
But Bear is twenty-five, I think, that's supposed to be, that's a twenty-five, is it?
It's twenty-five, once you get-
City limits.
Yeah, right, right.
Thirty-five, forty-five, beyond that.
Right, right.
I just don't see that sign really doing, addressing the problem of speed.
Yeah, I, I think we need to have Marty put an officer out there, in a squad car, and do some ticketing, and all of a sudden, people learn that they can't do thirty-seven miles an hour up that road, and they're gonna pay for it. And I think behavior changes after that word gets around. The signs aren't gonna change the behavior.
Did the signs change behavior on Vine Street? I think it slows a lot of people down on Vine Street.
Change behavior, it's a question of, is it warranted, given the volume?
Well, this, how high, how much higher is the volume during the school year? 'Cause this was done prior to, this was done in the summer, and the high school kids all, many of them take this road to and from school. You know, and parents, I'm sure the volume-
I would have to say double.
So-
That'd be a conservative estimate.
So, the volume, seven months out of the year would be conservatively doubled than what we have for data.
Double this, I guess, how does it compare to?
Vine Street.
I'm just trying to get it, is it warranted, given the volume of traffic?
We've tried everything on this intersection, I mean, I'm, I think we've been discuss, been discussing this intersection since I came on council, when you were Public Safety Chair.
It's been a while.
When we, when we repaved it, we thought about putting rumbler, rumbler strips down, we couldn't do that, 'cause of the plows.
Right.
We put a dangerous intersection sign, people are still going thirty-seven.
Put flags on it, stop signs.
We don't wanna stop sign.
How many tickets have we issued there? Okay.
I think that's one thing that hasn't been done, there's been a really aggressive approach to ticketing. And I'm, I think we try that, and see if it helps.
I agree.
How long do we try it for, I mean, we shouldn't ever stop it, but how long, are you looking for a trial basis, or, and then what, we bring it back and talk about it? Let's, let's go back to why were we talking about this intersection? I mean, what's the purpose, I mean, initially, it was a stop sign. And that, in my opinion, made absolutely no sense to put a stop sign on that particular, that'd be a five-way stop there.
We're talking about it, 'cause there was issue that came to Public Safety where children are trying to cross over to go to the park and stuff, and cars are going too fast, and they're worried about their kids getting hit. So, the residents, the residents brought it to our attention, for like, the fifteenth time.
You wouldn't allow a young child to cross that street on St. Croix Street by themselves anyway, would you?
I, I don't know, I'm, I can't parent the whole city.
Nope.
So, I just-
Oh, but I mean, that is a, that's a busy street, I mean, you, uh-
I mean, it's a blind intersection, no matter what we do.
Yep.
I, I go down three to four times a week, I've never had a problem at that intersection, and I go down there intentionally just to see how bad it is. And I'll go there at night, and I'll go there during the afternoon, and I have never had a problem at that intersection. Yeah, you have to move your car out a little bit and look down the road to see if a car is coming, but it's visible, I mean, if a car's coming, you can see them. I mean, if you, if you stop and don't look, you're, you're gonna have a problem. I, again, the, the data that we have says that that intersection is not a problem, and therefore, I'm not in favor of doing anything other than maybe enforcing it for speeding, and issuing some tickets to the people who are speeding.
Okay.
So, when you enforce, when you do your, you enforce that stop sign before we change it to a yield sign up on Eleventh Street, remember? When you guys were doing that, do you not remember, am I just talking to myself right now on this one? On Crestview and Eleventh, by the post, Hagan, Crestview and Hagan. I mean, I understand changing habits, but I don't know how much that act, enforcement, I think it temporarily does a change, but then people get, go right back to their old ways, I mean, personally how I feel, but that's fine, I don't mind if we wanna go that route, it's just one more route we're trying before we do something else that we've been doing, so. I have no problem going through the process of elimination until we get to something, but I think there needs to be some sort of solution there eventually.
I just don't want us to really dis, don't, let's not discount what the, the people that live around that intersection are telling us.
Right. 'Cause it's not the first time it's come to our attention from people over there.
But I don't think that this sign is the answer.
So, well,
So what do we, what do you wanna do, you wanna-
I'm still waiting for someone to find a better answer, besides, besides patrol for every other, every three days for a month, or whatever they're gonna do. So.
I guess we can-
Well, I think you patrol at strategic times, when traffic is heavy, different days of the week, maybe morning-
Morning, going to school.
Right, of course.
After school.
But it's not gonna be every day that way, and-
No, but it, it might wake some people up, and-
Slow them down. Yeah, if we get tougher, maybe they'll start taking their driving responsibilities a little more serious, as you're suggesting, and we can't babysit everybody, as you would just said.
Right, so how about we, if, if they patrol it, school starts September, however you wanna patrol it, and then after you feel you've patrolled enough, you put that speed data back out there, and we'll see if it's changed the habits of the people driving on that road.
Sounds good.
Bring it back to the October public ticketing.
Sure, after the speed data goes out, so we get, we can reassess the speed data after we've given some tickets and tried to change habits.
Okay, is that okay with everyone?
Do, do we still have our trailer?
Yep.
That's what I'm talking about, the speed-
And that's where this data came from?
Yep.
Okay.
And we'll put it back out-
The trailer help?
Obviously not, 'cause it's catching people at thirty-seven.
But I mean, it's basically a-
When we put the trailer out, we shut the screen down, we want, we don't want people all of a sudden jam the brakes and then pull our data out. We shut the screen down just to collect the data.
Gotcha.
So if we give them tickets, and if that does change their habits, we'll find out, and we'll put the trailer back out, right?
Well, I mean, if we put the trailer back out, granted, we won't be able to get the data then, but I mean, that would tell us if the sign, if a sign would work.
No, we are gonna get the data, if we put the trailer back out, the same way we got the data this time.
You're saying put the trailer back out, but with the-
No, no, I don't want the trailer with the tickets. Do, do the enforcement first, and then put the trailer out.
Right, right.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone?
I just think for most people coming into town on that road, they don't think about changing their speed until they go under the railroad bridge.
Obviously, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
We're expecting them to slow down a lot further back, and it's not happening. But the vast majority are under thirty-five to forty miles an hour, even, you know, even with this, I think it's just taking them a little longer to slow down.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone? Yes.
One second, Mr. Mayor, we did talk with Tom about putting a warning sign farther down towards Boulder Courts, letting everybody know that the speed is gonna change from thirty-five to twenty-five as you're coming into the city. Hopefully, that'll slow it down, and I'm gonna suggest to Tom that maybe we even put a flag on the twenty-five mile an hour sign, just so people see it before they hit it.
Good idea.
It's right after Boulder Ridge, that's when it hits the twenty-five.
It's hard after driving forty-five to thirty-five, to drop to twenty-five at the city limits there, it's a, it's a, and then you're going downhill until you get down to the bottom base of the under, underpass.
Right, we are gonna put out some more warning signs to-
Can we reflag the dangerous intersection sign, too?
Sure.
Since we're flagging? Just flag away, I'm just curious, to see what happens.
Okay, good, thank you. Update on project. Karen?
The Lake Malibu Project, the safety fence has been installed around the drainage channel, and all the riprap is complete. And it's my understanding that the insurance company just approved for the shed that was hit, knocked by a tree, so that shed is gonna be removed. And once that's removed, then we can finish the project and complete the driveway work. Then on Red Cedar Canyon, the curb and gutter has been installed on all three roadways. And it sounds like they're gonna be paving very soon, they wanna pave next week, put the Batumina Space Course down.
Questions, roundabout. Let's talk about the roundabout at the hospital. What's the progress on that?
I-
Have you had a chance to take a look at that yet?
I have not heard any work or construction, Denny was gonna inform me when construction was gonna start.
It's already started.
Yeah, it's underway.
Yeah, it's been work, been working on, and I've been getting complaints a lot, can, which, can we possibly add more warning signs or something before the O'Neill Turn? Apparently, it's not, it's not, um, it's not giving people enough time to realize that they can't continue forward on stage line, and I'm getting a lot of complaints. It's blocked off, I understand that, I think, I personally think it's fine, but I've received a lot of complaints, and if we can just put another warning sign out there that construction ahead, detour at O'Neill.
I think what happened, in my opinion, what happened was the signs went up, but it was still open. And so people were going down there, and then when it closed-
Right.
The signs were still up, and-
It got very, yeah, so, I mean, all, if, I don't know if it just says, road closed ahead, detour to O'Neill, and then, you know, just-
So we need more construction?
Just something right bef, right after Lighthouse and Red Cedar Canyon, before they can, like, as they're going down the hill, before they start to go up the hill, I mean, once they go past, once, I mean, they can't turn anyways, they're gonna have to turn on O'Neill no matter what, so, but apparently, it's frustrating.
Okay, well, my understanding was that that construction hadn't even started yet, so.
Yeah, the road's been closed for quite some time.
Okay.
At least two weeks, I think.
So.
Okay. Anything else for Karen? You have any questions? All right, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Uh, new business, consider resolution fifteen dash thirteen, resolution requesting application for exemption from County Library Tax, Neil. You wanna talk about that, issue sheet and resolution?
Sure, as everybody here is well aware of, last year, the residents of the city of Hudson and the other members of the joint library communities ended up paying the county, you know, a portion of the county library levy, as a matter of fact, the residents of four community paid fifty-five, I think it was fifty-four percent of the county library levy. Based upon our, um, it's, it's an odd formula, but because we participated last year for, last year, the county's mill rate was driven down to the point where our contributions, based upon what we did this year, would exempt us, or give us the opportunity to apply for exemption for our residents from the county library levy. So, what would happen is, if you approve this resolution tonight, that would go to the county, the county board would then take action on approving the exemption, and if approved by the county board, what would end up happening is our residents would be exempt from the county library levy for two thousand thirteen taxes paid in two thousand fourteen.
And that's a good thing.
That's a good thing, yes. The other, I think the other thing to note here is that in the state's budget, the two-year budget that was approved for the, the years beginning July one, there was a provision for joint libraries to be exempt as, as long as they met the, the previous maintenance of effort standards. But that is own, that will come into effect for taxes paid based upon the two thousand fourteen exemption. So that's really two thousand fourteen taxes paid in two thousand fifteen. So I'm not sure what the process is going to look like next year, but for this year, there's an opportunity by passing this resolution where you can apply to the county to exempt our residents from paying both, you know, their property taxes and the county library levy, which really only serves to support, you know, circulation to people from outside or from community, or, you know, who live in communities that don't have libraries.
Okay. I'll move to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Van Slo?
Yes.
Dewickel?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Horsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve resolution fifteen dash thirteen?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Neil. Chief E.B. Next item on the agenda is designated point of contact for the state of Wisconsin and FEMA regarding storm damage funding issue sheet.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so basically, what we need is, we met with the head of FEMA, or one of the folks from FEMA on Friday, regarding the funding, since we did receive the presidential declaration for funding for the storms that went through in June, what we need now, basically, is just someone that we can designate as a point of contact for the city of Hudson, someone that's gonna be available to take phone calls, to meet with representatives, to be able to meet with the department heads, and basically, just be available for this project alone. The concern had come up whether or not, or who really it was gonna be, because this really is gonna be time-consuming, it can, it can be, it may not be, we have no idea. Um, there's gonna be times where it absolutely will be, but the concern came up of whether or not it would interfere with, interfere with other duties of either myself or someone else that would do it, so we're bringing it to you guys to see what you thought. Tom Zulley and I have been working on this pretty much together since it started, along with Kristen out at the county, and we've got a pretty good grasp on it, I think we've kinda got it down, I don't think we'd have a problem continuing with it, no matter what, Tom has to be involved. And then to bring someone else in, you know, to kind of fill in what I've done, I think we may be at risk of kinda missing some things, and I don't want that to happen either.
Devon, any ideas?
Well, you know, as Kim said, it's just with the understanding that that may take away, we have a portion of our salary already being covered for emergency government, but, you know, I guess we'll just have to kinda monitor her time, if you were to have Kim do it, and if it ends up being, you know, substantial amount, you know, partners, that was a concern for the partners in EMS, we would just have to then figure out, we would then have to move some money, you know, out of emergency government to cover her wages.
So, could Neil or you help cover this? If, you know, or is that not what, are, are you looking for some help, or are you-
No, originally, 'cause actually, originally, we had put Neil down as the point of contact, because it was the person that had the financial
Yes.
gain on everything, and how, you know, everything was gonna be priced out. And then the more we met with the representatives, it was someone that needed to know what the projects were, kinda someone that's on the ground dealing with it. Neil hasn't been out in the field doing all this stuff with us, he's been gaining all the numbers, and I don't know where it would be without him. But as far as the projects themselves, what's going on, I kinda turned and looked at him, and I, we both kinda had the same look on our faces of holy cow, this is gonna be huge, and so we're just, I don't think it would be a project for Neil to be able to be outside and going to the different sites with the FEMA representatives.
Okay. Can you change in the midstream point of contact, or will that disrupt? If, let's say you've got overwhelmed, you said, I, I can't, I got other duties, I gotta take care of this.
Between, and that's a good, there's a, there needs to be a main point of contact, and then a secondary, so I guess what we could do is, we could put myself down and Tom both down as the point of contacts, and then working together, we would be able to get it figured out.
Does, does that work for you? Tom, does that work for you? In defense to also Neil, though Neil has gone through this, in a city, in Osceola, so-
You know, administratively, and providing numbers and all that, it would still be up to Neil, you know, to do that, whatever assistance I can bring.
Yeah, we still- And I even talked to Kristen about it as well afterwards, as far as, you know, who is gonna be the best for the city right now, because out of the county of St. Croix, we have the most damage. Um, so the biggest work is, and the biggest projects are coming out of this city right now. She said that most likely, it's gonna be meetings between a few of us, at least, each time, just to make sure everything's adding up, that everything's going right. Um, it's gonna be kind of a team collaboration, it just needs to be, we needed one person to be the point of contact.
How long do they think this'll take? Is it a six-month thing, a one-year?
Two years.
Neil's shaking his head, no. Eight hours a day for two weeks? So we would completely lose our, our, our chairs, or not our chairs, our, out of our apartments for two weeks? It doesn't sound very responsible, so, sorry. It's those iPads, I told you, we shouldn't get them.
Can we, can we let Devon and, and Chief, the chief and Tom figure out what, what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
'Cause I don't think we-
Well, and the, the difficulty, of course, is, you know, me being the point of contact is, but I would have to get Kim involved anyway, because she's been-
Right. But I mean, the issue of, you know, meeting and whether part of it is the financial part, that Neil could sit in, or-
Well, we certainly, I mean, yeah, I mean, Kim could be the current contact, but we certainly have the understanding that all four of us, whoever else we need, we certainly will be there to support her and help her, and, and we'll just monitor what Kim's, you know, as far as the concern from EMS with the hours and stuff, we'll ensure we monitor that, so.
Does that answer your question, Kim, or did we not give you a good answer? What were you looking for, and did you get what you wanted?
I'm looking for a vacation after all this, but, um-
Well, I think you deserve it.
It's been fun, it's been a learning experience, if I, if I can say anything, and I'd-
Hopefully, we won't have to do it again?
Not for a long time, I'd be all right with that, so. Yeah, no, I mean, this was exactly, we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it, and make sure that this is something that you guys were okay with as well.
And, and if you feel at a point where it's just, you gotta let us know, or let Devon know, and then we'll, we'll make some other arrangements, or we'll try to make some other arrangements. Is that okay with everyone? So you're asking for the appointment, then?
Honestly, you know, and I, I'm not asking for it, I just don't think that there's anybody else that's gonna be able to do it with me having done everything up to this point.
Tom, do you have time to be?
I asked Tom that, too, I asked him, but-
I mean, this is, Tom's in the middle of street projects and everything else, and we're gonna put him like eight hours a day in a room?
Well, we could also, you know, depending on what it is, if Tom's doing something, if it's them going out and looking at a project, Chuck would have, you know, he's got Chuck, that could, you know, he's got Deb, I mean, we'll just have to make sure that we use all our resources as we can.
Tom doesn't seem to, to-
No, and he's down a guy right now, right, you're gonna be down a guy-
No, and he's down a guy right now, right? You're gonna be down a guy, I don't know, Tom's nonverbals are telling me, please, no.
Well.
The process so far that, y- y- you know, with all the damage that has happened, I think we've, you know, have a handle on the storm cleanup, I think that's under control. I think we have the, you know, the pile of, of tree branches and limbs are going away, I, I would say they're about a third ground up now. The other damage to the streets and infrastructure, um, you know, I have a basic handle on, you know, the damage to the streets, stormwater, uh, structures, and the big issue, and, you know, I've mentioned it before, is the damage to, to all the different storm ponds. You know, I've already visited those areas with the, uh, first representative from FEMA, uh, so I ha, I think I have a handle on, you know, the projects and the things that we need to get repaired as far as the storm ponds. That's gonna be a very time-consuming thing there, but, um, I do have a, you know, I know where the locations are, I think I have a handle on the damage and what it takes to get the areas repaired. So, I guess I personally don't have a problem with that. Um, but, you know, I'm gonna be out of the office a lot with, if we have to visit each site, and so it's gonna be out in a lot of the field work, so. I'll have to make sure my cell phone's charged up.
Well, the issue comes in, if we want reimbursement for the, uh, uh, damage that was caused, that's what we have to do, I mean, that's, that's how it works.
Well, it seems like one of those things where they're asking for one person, but we all know full well.
Yep.
There's Neil, there's Tom, there's Kim.
Yep.
They all need to be involved, so.
Yep.
I just don't want them all involved at the same time.
I don't think they will. They shouldn't have to be.
I agree, but I, I think we're just at a point, we let them take care of it, and.
Okay, and if you need help, or if, if something's not working, let us know, let me know.
Yep.
Okay? Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that need a, a formal motion, Kristen? That's, do we, they need to make a formal? No.
Resolution.
No, that's the next one.
No, I, we just needed this, so that way I could put it down on the application for FEMA.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Resolution sixteen dash three, resolution adapting an all-hazard mitigation plan for the city of Hudson.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Rule call.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes. It's just you two, Kim?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Just, just for the record, there was a plan appro, or there was a resolution, I think it was in two thousand seven or eight, but that was the old plan. So, that's why we need to redo the resolution, because the county has updated their plan.
Kristen, you have something, too?
Kristen is here from the county to answer all your questions.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to come, um, and I wanted to help Kim out, too, just because I know the background about this. Um, in two thousand seven, the county got a grant to, uh, develop the plan, and we, um, adopted it back then, and that's when you guys adopted the original plan in two thousand eight. Then in two thousand ten, uh, we applied for a grant to help us update, um, the next plan, which every five years, the plan is required to be updated by FEMA. And so, we, um, at that time, we requested a letter of intent to participate, and, um, uh, Mayor Knutson signed one in two thousand ten. And then we received the grant. In two thousand eleven, we updated the plan in two thousand twelve, and now, in two thousand thirteen, we are asking all the municipalities who participated to adopt it. The county adopted the plan on February eighth of two thousand thirteen, and as, um, the city adopts the plan, then it opens up hazard mitigation funds, uh, for mitigation projects. For the city at seventy-five percent federal funds, and then, um, twenty-five percent local funds.
Okay.
And that's what's before you tonight.
Okay, that's the resolution. Do we have a copy of the plan?
It's out, I, it was, it's seventy-some pages, and I don't know if I have the link correct out there, it's, it's at the West Central Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Looking at the link there, I think I got an extra letter in there, but if you go out there, there's documents on the left side in the menu.
Okay.
And it's out there, it just, I didn't, I could've pulled it in as a PDF, but it's huge with lots of maps and.
Lots of maps and, um, but the full plan will be, once we received all, all the adoptions from all the municipalities, then it'll be a complete plan, and we'll send out copies to all municipalities.
Okay, we have, we've moved to suspend the rules. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
We need a motion.
I thought, I thought we had a motion.
Move to approve resolution.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve resolution sixteen dash thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, is there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve D, discussion of alcohol issues related to pedicab ordinance.
Randy asked that this be placed on.
Yep, I simply want clarification, if the state has no, uh, statutory documentation on this, does it not fall to the individual municipalities to set their own ordinance on that issue, alcohol-wise?
Well, the state doesn't allow public consumption of alcohol without, uh, well, public consumption of alcohol outside of a licensed premises.
But we, as a municipality, could license that pedal cab?
No, no, you have to have a, no, we've talked with the alcohol, the alcohol tobacco enforcement, they say no.
You need to have a licensed, fixed licensed premises.
Okay, that's all I wanted, clarification.
There has been some discussion, I understand, coming out of the city of Milwaukee, seeking a change in legislation, but that has not occurred yet.
To allow it, alcohol?
Yeah, for these, not really for the pedal cabs, for these pedal tours, we call them, because in Wisconsin, they're not pubs.
Right.
Okay. Like they have in Minneapolis, or St. Croix.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Does that answer that?
Yep, thank you.
Uh, communication from anyone, council members, or anything you'd like to add, future agenda items? City attorney?
Nope.
Uh, city ma, city administrator?
No.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.